All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Uh, this meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local, local channel eight. And through the town website at www dot eastham dash ma dot gov. We'll start with select board and public information and I'll look to the board first to see if there's any thing you'd like to share. Jamie?
Um, I just want to thank the, all the town staff, um. Especially, you know, folks doing stickers and DPW and everybody who's, you know, really working. Um, about as hard as he possibly can through this stretch between now and the end of August is really challenging. Whether you work retail or a restaurant or for the town, um, so you know, we really appreciate how hard everybody is working. And hope that everybody out in the community does the same.
Thanks, Jamie. Alright, anyone else from the board?
Yeah, uh, Amy and I attended the wind farm session that was held by Boam. Last week luckily lower Cape TV filmed the entire thing. It's, it's a little long. Uh, they do a presentation in the beginning and they kind of go over. How we, how we got to where we got and then took a lot of public comment. I could certainly appreciate. Things taking many years to develop and you kind of have to like. Have a plan to present to people before you get public comment. Um, however, I will say in this multi-year process, um, we seemed to be the last ones to be told that it was going to be visible. From our coast. Yeah, the environmental review comment period ends today.
Yeah, I think one of the things that was pretty disheartening was that there was a woman from Wellfleet who went to a meeting. In, I don't know, was it in Barnstable? Maybe? And they gave her a red name label and she said, why do I have a red one? And they said, oh, you're on the task force. And she's like. Since when? And they said since like September twenty nineteen, all elected officials on the Cape. Were invited to be on the task force. And she said, no, we weren't. So yeah, this is the first anybody was hearing about. So they like kind of perked up when that was said that nobody. And Leslie got up and.
So they just thought we weren't interested.
Right. So they had meetings in Danvers, North Shore. But none here and it somehow ended up twenty seven miles off our coast. Without any input from the Cape. So it was a little, yeah, a little disheartening to hear that, that we were supposed to be invited. Two years ago, or was it twenty nineteen?
It was, it was a long, I mean, it was.
Maybe it was two years ago. It was two years ago.
Yeah, and even if you watch the thing, I make a comment early on in that. We've gone to professional conferences. We have heard the senators. And the governor and the lieutenant governor under two administrations. Speak about Massachusetts climate, energy goals, not a peep. About a thousand, a thousand wind turbines off of the national seashore. And it's been important, people.
In a marine sanctuary.
I, yeah, I mean, we could go on and on and on about it. I could go on and on and on about it, but we. We get a lot of people who come here.
Room was packed at the Sheridan.
Yeah, over two hundred people. It was a lot of fishermen. As well.
Yeah, I encourage anyone to look at lower Cape TV and it's on demand, I believe, to see.
I think they, they denied a request to extend the comment period and said, we're going to hold, uh. Public hearings to, to hear from people. I think this was at least the first one. It may be their only one, who knows, but that's what they're trying to do.
Yeah, and we, we do this obviously. And there's a certain amount of you try and let people know the best you can ahead of time. But I think they really dropped the ball on letting us know. Ahead of time.
Right. Alright, anyone from the public have anything that's not on the agenda? I don't see any hands online. Alright, we'll move on. First item on our agenda is Paul Lag to present a strategic planning update for us. Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to, uh, for those who don't know, uh, know her, Hope Plavon is the chair of the Board of Health and she's also on the Strategic Planning Committee. And she's been helping us, um, with the plan update.
Can you make sure it's on and, yeah?
Is that better? Well, I don't want to, Hope Plavon is here. And, uh, Hope has been helping us get this plan across the finish line, doing a lot of work with us. So I just want to acknowledge that, um. The committee's out doing outstanding work, but Hope has really been helping us out. So thank you. So we're going to give a, um, brief update on the strategic plan. Just kind of clarify the obvious, but, um, this is our five-year plans. It's our short-term plan to try to accomplish our highest level priority objectives. And this is all a reflection of the community's long-term vision. So it's a short-term plan to achieve our long-term, long-term vision. Just quick background, we do have the Strategic Planning Committee. These are the members. Karen Strauss is the, um, is the chair. And so we got a pretty well, pretty well-rounded group. Um, Michelle Vion is our newest member representing the planning board. And then obviously we have, um, Jackie and myself are the primary staff liaisons, but obviously all the action items that are in the plan. Town staff from all, all of our departments pretty much and volunteers from all of our boards and committees. You know, this plan is touches on pretty, pretty much every department or every committee in some way or another. So there's a lot of people behind the scenes doing a lot of work. But the Strategic Planning Committee is stewarding this update process. So the approach to updating the plan, um, obviously we're using the current plan as the foundation. But what we're really trying to do in the update is look at all of our sub-plans. As you know, we have a lot of plans around the town, a housing production plan, a wastewater plan, a harbor management plan. All of those plans have action items and strategies and action items in them. And so what we're really trying to do this time is go through. We really did an audit of those plans, try to find out what's in there. How does it relate to the strategic plan? And then really nest these sub-plans together so that when the strategic plan is finished, you really be seeing sort of elevating the priorities. From those other sub-plans into the strategic plan. Um, so that there's some cohesion there. And really the, when you're looking at the strategic plan, you'd be looking at the highest priority items from kind of the whole breadth of what's going on in the town. Um, and there are some things that don't necessarily sit in a sub-plan per se, but they're obvious. Those are priority items that kind of straddle a lot of different things, but that's really the main. The main thing I wanted to highlight here is we are trying to integrate all of our various planning initiatives into the strategic plan. So it aligns and it makes sense. Um, another key piece is trying to leverage regional model bylaws and best practices. The Cape Cod Commission has a lot of model bylaws that we're looking at, especially for, um, items related to land use, zoning. Environmental issues, um, wetlands bylaw issues, that kind of thing. So we're trying to integrate those as best we can. And, uh, you know, and align our local planning efforts with those regional models and state models. And then. Really trying to make sure that this plan can be a management tool, um, for, for Jackie, for Rich and for the select board. And also for the staff to prioritize our workload, focus efforts. And you know, this. You know, Rich has focused, has integrated this strategic plan into our budget process. So it's a reference point. It's a, it's a. Way that we kind of vet through our budget process already, and that's been a useful tool. So. Really want to make sure this plan is, is a living document and a management tool wherever it can be. And obviously that coincides with coordinating, um, the select board's goals and. You know, hopefully, um. Individual committees and boards, their, their goals, their work plans and so forth. So that again, this thing kind of all nests together. And we have a coordinated effort going forward. But I, I think I just want to emphasize being able to use this plan. Especially staff, departmental workloads and, and work plans, being able to say, what, what are we supposed to be focusing on? As you know, there's always something new. Comes up on the horizon or drops out of the sky, new opportunities. Sometimes they're really good opportunities and we have to, you know, seize, seize the moment. Other times, it's, other times maybe not. And so this plan is a good way to kind of vet and say, is there. Is this something we should be spending time and effort on? Yes, no. And I found that's been the case over the course of the current plan for myself anyways. So, um, we are attempting to simplify and streamline this plan. So we're going. We're keeping our three guiding principles. Those are unchanged, but we're reducing the number of goals. And the current plan has eight strategies, thirty sub-strategies and over a hundred very fine, finely detailed action items. So we're trying to streamline that and make it, um, a little more, um, manageable. This is just to illustrate that the current plan, there's a lot of great things about our current plan. It's, as I said, it's been a tremendous help. It's really done a lot, but fresh set of eyes, it is a bit unwieldy and especially the action steps. Are very detailed. And so we're, we're really just trying to clean this, clean this up and make it kind of step it up a level. A lot of the action steps we are looking at, it's, that's really staff level stuff that gets worked out, um, kind of behind the scenes. So we're trying to clean that. That portion of the plan up. So two, it's, it's, it's too dense and too much detail, so. Um, as I mentioned, the overarching principles, they're staying the same. You can, um, honor Eastham's history and protect small town identity. Living in harmony with our natural environment, our local culture, enhancing community vibrancy and viability for people of all ages. Those, um, are pretty universal and, um. Have worked well. And so the. And I should say, when I say we, I'm referring to the Strategic Planning Committee and the feedback we've gotten. There's been no inclination to, to change the principles. As I mentioned, we are trying to simplify and streamline the goals going from six to four. And really what that means is. Simplifying and broadening them so that we have a variety of things that kind of fall under, um, some general goals. More general goals. Just a. Status update. So as I mentioned, we've been going through, working with staff and we, um, over the. Past year really been doing a staff audit of the current plans, action items, going through what have we completed? What's still in progress? And then a lot of things that we discovered are just no longer valid. We vetted them. Didn't make sense for Eastham to implement or other circumstances have changed beyond our control, which means it's, you know, a lot of action items were no longer viable. So we went through that process with staff. What was left over for action items? Again, updating them, clarifying them, cleaning up the language. Again, a lot of action items are still valid, but. Need to be adjusted just based on other circumstances that have changed during the course of the last five years. So. Says completed, but that's still kind of a work in pro, you know, it'll, it'll still be an ongoing process. So we have, we have a draft of the goals and updated action items. But what we realized at the, um, Strategic Planning Committee was they really need to, the objectives really. We want to use best practices and we want to make these objectives smart. And that's, you know, making them specific, measurable, attainable, result-oriented and time-bound. One of the issues we discovered with our current plan is we really struggled with metrics. And how to, how to measure success, accountability and so forth. And we really never really had a good. Good way to measure this stuff. And so we're trying to get ahead of that by working the objectives into B. So that each objective has some sort of metric attached to it. So. We have a good base. It's really just. Reworking the way things are phrased or termed so that it becomes something measurable. Is really what we're trying to do at this point. So, um. That may mean that we need to break up some of the, um, objectives, because as you saw in your packet, some of them are kind of broad. The objectives are kind of broad and they touch on a lot of different things and the action items that go with them. Some of them are policy issues, some of them are regulatory, some of them are public outreach. So. It doesn't really lend, it's, a lot of the objectives don't lend themselves to being like one metric. So we may increase, as I, I know we're saying, we're trying to simplify. We may need to increase some of the objectives, but in the end I think it'll be worth it again, because we'll have. We'll get the advantage of being able to have this metric tied to each objective. Um, another important piece is going through the plan, assigning responsible entities to action items. Over the course of the current plan, the items that had a staff liaison attached to them directly. Made the most progress and, you know, can understand why there's just more attention. A lot of action items were assigned to a committee. And just by the nature of that, it's, it's just more difficult for the committee to, to get, to make that kind of progress. So. That's been something that's been brought up during, um, a lot of our feedback and with the Strategic Planning Committee itself. So we got to look at that. There's obviously, you know. A limit to what staff can do, but we're, we have to go through there and say, is it feasible to staff, to staff? All these action items in some way, or at least assign some responsible entity to keep tabs on it. So we're going through that, um, verifying timelines on each action item, um, trying to be realistic. A lot of these things, a lot of the action items are beyond our control. You know, we can make, we can do what we can do. But then it comes to a point where we have to wait on other, on other entities, state, local, federal, who knows? So we're just, we, but it's important to have a timeline again to make it into this, um, smart. Using the smart, um, objective model. And, uh, identifying important items that we might have missed, misplaced or misunderstood in the current plan. And what we have in the, in, in the updated plan. So this is, goes into getting feedback from the boards and committees, which I'll talk about in a minute. Um, and just kind of refining it and making sure that the plan remains, you know, comprehensive and. Um, lives up to the goal, the principles and the goals that we're trying to reach as a community. So those are quick overview of kind of what's in progress. And I'm just going to go, in your packet, I gave you kind of the full, the full outline that has the goals, the objectives and all the action items. I wasn't going to plan to go through all the slides of the action items, but just keep it on this level. But certainly. If you have questions on any of the items, I'm happy to go through, go through it. Goal number one is a clean environment, resilient community. And again, um, we need to, we need, need to make these smart objectives. So these, these all need to go through and have some adjustments to how they're worded and how they're phrased. So you can get a metric on them. But this really deals with, uh, wastewater and wastewater is obviously. Probably the number one priority and it touches so many other things in the strategic plan, housing, infrastructure development. So, um, wastewater is. Is a major focus for the next five years, but, um, stormwater, completing land management plans. Um, a new area, a new focus area, which wasn't really at all in our current plan is climate. Obviously a lot of things that happened over the last five years, uh, in the world in general related to climate. And we also have a, um, local climate action committee. So we've been trying to, and they're very proactive, as you know. And again, climate is going to touch on a variety of things that run all through this plan. So that's really a new, uh, focus area. We're trying to implement, um, integrate into the plan as best as we can. And I guess I'll just note, um, you'll see like as an example, objective eight is something we've been talking with the climate action committee. About like, how do we, what, what is Eastham doing? How do we relate that to the larger issue? And like, this is just a, almost like a placeholder to say. The state is working on a net zero, uh, net zero greenhouse gas emissions plan. It doesn't line up with our five-year plan and the numbers, but how can we look at that as a, as a state model, a best practice, a benchmark? And kind of work it backwards to say, what's, what's tangible for Eastham to do? How can we tie it into some achievable metric in our? Um, five-year window. So that's just to kind of highlight what we're trying to do, go back and make these smart, smart objectives. Goal number two focuses on land use, infrastructure, um, environment and housing in the community. It's a, it's a pretty broad goal. Um, but there's a lot of stuff going on in it and, um. This really deals with all the work we're doing on the Northeast Ham Center Master Plan. Um, but, um, public water supply, again, going into the final phase of that. And I just keep reiterating, all these, all of these objectives need to be reworked and made into smart objectives. So these are works in progress, but these, the, um, the focus areas are going to remain the same. Um, affordable and workforce housing, obviously huge. With wastewater really one and two or one and one A, depending on how you want to look at it. And zoning and land use development regulations go right in hand with those things. So those are, um, the four objectives under this. Under this goal. Goal three, quality of life, ensuring a diversity of residents and a strong community. Again, what we're trying to do is a lot of the stuff that's in the current plan, just trying to rework it a little bit. But, you know, we have in the current plan focusing on, um, making sure that our, our, um. Facilities and community programs. Offer opportunities for a broad range of ages and people of all backgrounds and, and diverse. Diverse accountability. So that continues. Again, just trying to put metrics on this and how we will, um, try to facilitate that. Another new focus area for, for this, um, which really wasn't highlighted in the current plan is ADA accessibility. Last year, a year and a half ago, the town went through and had our ADA, um, audit, which identified. And again, just as I mentioned earlier, trying to nest these plans in. So where we have a plan, go, go to that plan. What are the action items? What are the priorities in that? And can, can we elevate it? Or which ones of those can we elevate to the strategic plan? So same thing we're trying to do here. We have an ADA audit that was performed on all of our town, um, facilities. And we're trying to go in there and say, what are the things that we are already doing? And a lot of stuff on this building, um, was in that plan, some of the, um, improvements we've made. What are we already working on? What are we likely to be doing in the next five years or know what we're already going to be doing and elevate those into the strategic plan? And the fourth goal is new, and this is a new focus area. So excellence in town services. And this is really trying to look at ourselves as a, as, as the administration and the services we provide. To say, where, you know, what are we doing? Where can we, where can we improve? What needs to be? Not so much what do we need to be doing? And then where can we approve what we're already doing? And this, a lot of these objectives run behind the scenes to all the other objectives and all the other action items. So, you know, it's obviously, there's always software and technology, um, issues that abound. But, you know, this gets to staffing, as I mentioned before, if we're going to start, if it's a priority to assign, uh, staffing to everything in this plan. We need to know that. We need to plan accordingly for, and budget accordingly for that. So, um, this is a new, this is a new area. And I think, um. I, I think it's a good addition, kind of helps ground the plan. And it's to me a kind of a reality check of all this other stuff that's, you know, all these other action items and goals. If we don't have the staff, if we don't have the technology, if we don't have the, whatever else we need on the town. Public service side, it's not going, we're not going to make the progress that we want. So again, I'll reiterate, all of these objectives are work in progress. We need to get metrics on it. So, you know, adjustments in how we go about it, um, are in the process. Um, timeline and next steps. So we, um, have started some of this. We did, um, Hope and I met with the Climate Action Committee last week, got a lot of feedback. They're looking at their objectives, trying to get, get metrics. Uh, suggestions for how to put metrics on the items they're concerned with. We did have a presentation, um, last week at our senior staff department head meeting. Hope and I will be going to the, starting with the regulatory board. So we're on for the Board of Health, CONSCOM, Planning Board and Zoning Board. In the next, um, July and August. Um, and then we obviously have a lot of committees and advisory groups. So the Strategic Planning Committee, we need to talk about what our effort will be there. Can we get to all of them? If not, what are the priority ones? Um, so that, but we do want to make sure we can get. As much fee, obviously get as much feedback as we can. It's vital. Um, for the success of the plan, um, public presentations, opportunities for comment. I will be making a presentation at the COA on August eighth as part of the COA's new, um, I can't remember what they. Are calling there. They have a new program to kind of get.
The government, meet the.
It's more interactive. I can't, they have a name for it. I'm just slipping my mind. But anyways, I, I'll be, um, making a presentation to the. At the COA on August eighth, we're planning to have a public information session, September fourth at the library. You just have to nail down the time. We'll have a public comment period on the draft plan, which we posted on the web and we'll do some social media, make sure folks are aware of it. And then really this is all culminating with, um, bringing this back to the select board for final review and adoption. End of September, beginning of October, depending on how things shape up and agenda availability. And then we. Do need to plan for some sort of process for regular status updates. And that again, will be going into what is the role of the Strategic Planning Committee? We kind of did sort this out when we redid the charge. So there's, there's better clarity there, but just getting into a routine of. How often do they meet? What should, you know, what needs to be done? And how often does the select board want to have a status update or in what format? That kind of stuff. And again, I think once we finish the plan and get those metrics, that'll go a long way to. You know, how, how that might be formatted. I think the best, one of the best things we've been able to do though is have. These updates run in the annual town meeting warrant. And I think. As we struggle so much with the metrics, just how, a lot of stuff didn't lend themselves to being measured, you know, quantitatively like that. But I think I've gotten a lot of feedback on that. I think just presenting success stories and highlighting. Projects that were completed or major milestones has been a great way to kind of educate what's going on. But also that's kind of, and I think when we talked to the strategic plan, it'll probably end up being some sort of mix. Some of the stuff will definitely be able to have more data on. But having a mix of that with just success stories and milestones and kind of have, um, a hybrid approach to keeping. The status monitored. So that is a very quick overview. I wanted to keep it high level, but I know you, the board had more detail in the, um. In the packet. So I'm happy to go through anything you like, answer any questions.
Anyone from the board have any questions? Comments?
I don't, I don't have any questions. The presentation was fantastic and, um, our packet does have some really great information. So I would definitely encourage anybody to just log on or hop on the website and, um, take a look at the packet too, if they wanted more in-depth information.
And I assume you'll have different sort of presentations, depending on which board. You're going to in the future. So, you know, if people watch those meetings too, they can, yes, they can glean. You know, certain things.
Yeah, the, the only question I had, Paul, this is great, was, um. I'm interested to see your plan on getting us from forty percent to fifty percent, uh.
Water hookup.
Water.
Well, fortunately, I don't have to do every single action item, not being false. That one's not assigned to me, I don't think.
Uh, how did you get the number of, um?
Thanks. Start over.
Uh, how did you get the action items basically covered and, uh, cut in half?
Well, a lot of them.
How did you, what was your process for weeding through that?
Well, the first cut was really when we did the audit, a lot of them came off anyways, because they've been done or they were no longer viable. So now we're just starting with what's left over. That's really where we go. But some of them, some of them will, I think, when we get through the, you know, when the plan's completed, there's still going to be some that come off and some that go on. Because as we start to meet with the other committees, you know, we, we kind of did a first pass, but they're still, you know, they're still refining what they want to do, like affordable, excuse me, affordable housing trust is a good example that the trust is trying to get their work plan for the next year, what they want to do. There may be things that, new things that come up. And again, that's where we're trying to vet, is it, is it already in the strategic plan? It's just might be an action item that needs to be reworked a little bit? Is it in the Cape Cod Commission's regional housing strategy? Is it in our local housing production plan? Those kind of like go through and look for alignment. And if, and if it doesn't appear in any of those other sources, then look at it, is this, is this something new that still has merit? It's important, does it go in the plan or, or not? And that's the thing to remember, there's more stuff going on than what's going to be in the strategic plan. These are just the highest level, most important priority objectives. So, you know, underneath all this is just all the day-to-day stuff that, you know, everybody, all the departments are doing. This is just kind of prioritize, prioritize the highest level items.
All right. Any other questions?
Comment was a question, just a comment that I was kind of excited to see the stormwater projects on here for a number of locations by at least three by twenty twenty-nine. And I was like, cool, that's great.
And that's a way of just, again, just trying to get a metric on it. The way that it's worded originally, it was just kind of a little bit too broad of trying to make progress on our, I think it was implement our stormwater management plan, which is what we want to do, but that's pretty broad. So even if we can, and we know we have five stormwater projects that are identified in process, works being done. So again, that's kind of a basic metric, but if we get three done, and if we exceed that, all the better. But so that's an example of how we're trying to rework these and refine the objectives.
There's so much finesse that goes into this because you're like, well, if I make it too specific.
Right.
But then if I make it too broad and it really needs to be somewhere in the middle.
That's the hardest piece.
Just one other comment, so the, you know, getting these metrics can be a real bear. If every action item has a deliverable, it becomes a little bit easier for everybody to understand.
Yep.
I might look for deliverables rather than metrics.
Yeah, that's a great point, yeah. And you were, you were on the plant and on the committee, so you have a good perspective on that. So that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
All right. Thank you.
I don't see any hands up for. On Zoom.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing it further down the road in September. All right, we're going to skip ahead to the Northeast Ham Village Center Master Plan update.
Okay.
Um, correct?
Okay.
How long is the update going to be? Why? Can, can we move the fan?
Oh, yeah. You can't hear anything?
I, it's just a little distracting. I have to like try a little bit harder than I want to. Thanks. It's really loud and I was like, how long can I? Yay, thank you.
You're welcome. Put it on again.
And also if you get really hot, I'm sorry.
She's sorry.
Put it in a different corner.
So, good evening, we've been doing these updates. Obviously, we, the strategic plan has been, we've been working on that update this whole past year. It's the time of the year when I usually like to give you any update on the strategic plan, any update on special projects that we have going. And as you prepare to create your goals for the year, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page. We've revisited everything we've touched before and, and everyone knows where we are. So that's, sort of the point of this is to not give you necessarily specific information we haven't given you before, but to respond to, I think, a valid criticism that we have not been able to articulate and show the connections between some of these projects. And what are we calling, what is the master plan and what does it consist of? So it's an overall update and it, it comes with a commitment to continue to update you and the community on what we're doing and how important it is. I also want to update and adjust expectations on the timeline, because I know people are very concerned about the slowness of some of these initiatives. But honestly, this is a series of closely related large infrastructure projects. And to say that they're large infrastructure projects is not underestimating the value of them. They are truly large and some of them require much, much interaction with other state and maybe federal agencies and a whole lot of planning in time. So just, I know it's hard to be patient, but we, we need your patience in order to do this right, right and well. And finally, I just wanted to get your feedback on where we are and determine some next steps for, with you guys on communication and what you're, what you're thinking as well. So that'll help Rich and I as we move into budget season, goal setting season, and then budget season. So what is the Northeast Ham Village Center Master Plan? There are four major initiatives that overlap. Basically wastewater, housing initiatives, Route Six and infrastructure improvements. And that includes interior infrastructure between Town Center Plaza and Tea Time and the Tea Time and Town Center Plaza Development. And that will include obviously some of those other elements. But this is not to say that we can't, we can't do these separately. We can do some of these separately, but they impact each other so greatly that it will limit what we can do depending on the other choices we make. So, you know, I want to say, was it three or four years ago? We made the decision to kind of get these, these projects in line and move them forward as best as we could, small steps at a time, so that we could have that big impact and have a truly, you know, well-done infrastructure development program for our community. And the, the bottom line is we're, we're, we're going right back to what Paul just discussed. You know, we are trying to protect our small town identity by getting density in one area, getting some high density in one area that makes sense to have density, leaving the rest rural. We, we want to obviously respect and protect the environment we have. I think most of us on Cape realize that the environment is literally what we have. So to lose it is not acceptable and we don't want to do that. And then to retain and sustain our community, to be able to grow the, the all ages of people, to have them be able to have economic development opportunities and to have housing opportunities. So why do they overlap? And I, and I think the, the biggest issue that people need to understand, residents and everyone else, is that Tea Time and Town Center Plaza Development are entirely dependent on the wastewater plan and some infrastructure improvements. Town Center Plaza is a, has a innovative alternative septic system that cannot be in, it, it, there's no space on that land to expand that. So it, any development beyond what we have on that lot relies on wastewater. Tea Time is in this, the zone two of our public water system, which means it has a, a little bit more degree of protection than the rest of our land. So therefore, any septic on Tea Time would need to be either traveling away from Tea Time, like our wastewater treatment center, or it would need to be highly developed onsite. So we'd have to basically have a little mini wastewater treatment center onsite. So if we do not have that, it will greatly reduce the amount of housing and other development we can do on that site. The other issue that I think Rich and I would, would really like people to understand is that all of these elements, as, as they move forward, are extremely expensive on their own. Together, if we plan them appropriately, there are extra, there is extra value and other state and federal and grant funds that will help us do this. And we can maximize those sources only if we know what the final plan is. You really can't get there without knowing what there is, where you're going. And then of course, we need to make any design financially feasible and attractive to developers and funders. And this is especially important with housing development. I'll, I'll tell you just a brief story, I know this is supposed to be high level, but years ago, the town purchased the Purcell property. And the Purcell property is a ten acre parcel that we built NOSA Green on, the housing, the, the affordable housing development that we have. For fifteen years, that parcel sat there, it went out for RFP a couple of times and no developer was interested in it because they could not figure out how to get water and septic on that parcel and get the intensity of use, the number of units they needed to, to get. It was only when we had public water and we increased the number of units that we were willing to, to build that we were able to attract a developer to build that building, to build those units. So it's really important for all of these pieces, but especially for housing, that we, we designed something that's financially feasible. So what, obviously, we're looking for the Eastham, Northeast Ham Village Center Master Plan to give us the overall vision of how all of these zoning changes we've been doing, where our planned housing development is going to be, how transportation and Route Six infrastructure will work, how safe will it be? And how do we combine all of these things together to give us a vibrant center of town in, in the middle of our beautiful town, right? What we're working on now, I, I mean, Paul and his team, and we've worked, have been working, I mean, we've been working on this for almost eight years, six years at least. And so going all the way back from two thousand and seven, there are plans that, that, that start to create this vision. This is not necessarily new. We have built each, from two thousand and fourteen on, we've been building on each one of these plans and getting information more as we need them as we go along. Right now, the steps that are happening, that I think people are largely unaware of, because they're not the most sexy and exciting of steps, are, we're doing a zoning and a comprehensive corridor study for the, to, to design the form-based code, to see whether it fits, to see whether all these uses work together on this parcel. And that has been, the zoning task force has been working on that for over a year now. And we also have now hired two consultants to help them with that work and to, to inform them on how, how the connections can be made, can the connections be made? We're also looking at a pro forma financial analysis of a build out and what certain levels of housing, what certain units of housing, what all that might look like. We are also looking at an interior road that may connect from Bracket through to Tea Time. Obviously, that requires some easements from some private property owners, but the feedback's been pretty good so far. And it looks like that could be a possibility. Doesn't mean we'll actually be able to build it, but it looks like it could be built. It is physically possible to lay out a twenty-four foot road, which is pretty big. And of course, our wastewater management plan has just gone to the state and has just passed its first hurdle of permitting in that we have received our letter from the secretary that we can proceed as planned. So that's awesome. So as you can see, all those little things make a big impact. And that's what we're, we're trying to do is, is figure out how, or figure out how to communicate how all of these pieces fit together into one piece. But overall, the most important one that we're working on right now is wastewater planning. And while we've completed a lot of steps, I want to focus on this slide for the next steps. I want you to take a look at that, because right now, it's very critical. We are in the permitting stage, we're in the design and development stage, and we're going to look for approval for a funding plan in May of twenty twenty-five, so next May. If that's approved, construction of the treatment and collection system will begin in twenty twenty-six. Only then could we even think about releasing housing RFPs. We can start working on housing as soon as we're confident that we have the funding to proceed with the wastewater plan. And that means, you know, getting our scope of services, going out to bid, all of those things can happen because it takes a long time between when we get that out and pick a developer and when it's funded. So I think we could catch up to wastewater development for the treatment plan in that time. We want to make sure that when the treatment plan and collection system is completed, we can hook something up to it. Or when we're in process of developing and building something, we can hook something up to the treatment plan. And just one step going back, I'm sorry, Kayla. We are still having monthly meetings with the town of Orleans to work on Phase Two. What will happen in Phase Two? How can we connect our southern, Southeast Ham residents to perhaps the water system in Orleans? Or do we expand ours? Or are there other elements by then, other options by then that might be more feasible? We're also obviously going to be continuing the discussion with residents in Southeast Ham about any innovative alternative treatments that come along that are approved, that we can help residents connect to. So there, nothing is off the table. It's just that we're focusing right now on the Salt Pond watershed area in the center of town. And you just got an update on Route Six transportation improvement, so I won't spend too much time on that. But you know, next steps for that are basically that we are going to be meeting with the DOT to run this plan by them, our preferred options by them. We have already had a couple of meetings with them and they've been open to some of our options before. So we don't, we're optimistic. And then we'd have to move forward with basically applying for some permission for design and funding for that roadway, for the roadway changes that we would like to have put on the Transportation Improvement Plan, which then gets funded by the state. So Northeast Ham Village Center Master Plan and Tea Time and Town Center Plaza Development. And I think Tea Time is really the parcel that everyone drives by and says, you know, what's going on? And, and not everyone cares or is up to date on any of the other elements of it, but Tea Time seems to be our lightning rod and that's awesome. It, both good and bad, it's, it's a wonderful parcel to have. So. Back, sorry, Kayla. In the Tea Time Committee spent almost. In the Tee Time Committee spent almost two years and and two difficult years because we worked right through COVID on this to come up with some recommendations for a mixed use on the parcel. So how can we have residential development with housing, some open space, some civic uses um like a community center? And and are these things possible? We we obviously added uh Town Center Plaza into that mix when we purchased Town Center Plaza. And we, in twenty twenty-three, last year, we wrapped up a master plan report from Union Studio. And their job, um Union Studio is a very creative, innovative design development firm. And their job was to say, is this possible? Can we fit what the Tee Time recommendations are, what these, can we fit those on both parcels and can it work? And they said basically, yes, we did a few open design sessions at the library and out in the community. Yes, it can work, it can fit, but you guys need to have some specialized analysis in terms of funding for housing and to determine that the components are financially feasible. And at the at the base of it, illustrate how zoning wastewater and infrastructure can create these opportunities, can work on the parcels. So we moved into our current work phase, which was um, I mean, the zoning task force has been working on zoning changes for housing and for reworking our 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 zones since two thousand and eighteen? You have to look at my timeline. Yeah. But last year, they intensively went into uh kind of going back to where we started. So we started with the District of Critical Planning Concern and to try and prevent some development that we didn't want. And the current work now is to say, what is the development and the density that we do want in the same corridor? And how will that look? How will that feel? How will that fit? We also are doing the financial analysis, as I said, and we're trying to, you know, this year we'll be integrating the wastewater plan into our future capacity. So we have to, you know, figure out how, what capacity we're going to need to hook up to wastewater and address obviously the Route Six, the traffic, and maybe that interior road. So future work will be some public discussions after this meeting. And once the analysis and the zoning analysis is completed, we're going to bring those back to you sometime this fall. And hopefully, once we do wastewater, we can get RFPs out. And I just, we put this up there to remind you what form-based code is. Basically, you know, Paul always corrects me that I don't really know what it is, and he's probably correct. But to me, it looks, you know, how do the forms of buildings, the infrastructure, the parking, the site plan, how does everything fit together? And does it look and function the way we want it to? So instead of having a zoning um district that just says what is allowed and what's not allowed in terms of uses, this is much more um intuitive. Uh, I think it'll be much easier to read and understand and for developers and regular residents, the everyday person, to understand. So if we get the voter's approval for a form-based code and wastewater treatment, then what do we do? And I think basically the answer to that is we use your recommendations, whatever the recommendations are. We put that together, we run it by you, we obviously engage the community in that. And then we move forward with whatever the plan is. And basically, the scope of services for housing, what type do we want? How many units do we want? And most importantly, I think, how mu- what are we willing to offer as a town? What do we have? Do we have a connection to wastewater? Do we have a hookup to public water? Do we have some local funds we can use? What are what do what are we offering a developer as a partner? We go out to bid, we choose the developer after evaluating proposals, and then we move into design, development, and permitting. And this can be the longest stage. Or in the in the case of Nauset Green, it literally was the shortest stage. It was less than a year. Um, that project was funded in the first round, but you know, we might not be that lucky this time. So we have to plan that that might take some time. In that time, while we're doing that, we're working with the developer to apply for state and federal funding. Um, and I have the Governor's Housing Bond Bill there with a question mark because that is sort of the wild card in the mix. We we have high hopes for it. We know that there are some special provisions that have been retained in the bill that have some special funding for seasonal communities, which we are. And we're also looking at the Governor's um bond bill to maybe give us some creative, different levels of income incentives. So just, you know, what else is there out there that we can, we can look towards and what tools will we have? But generally, if we stay the course, it looks, you know, it looks pretty positive. I also, um, just as an aside, Paul and I have both been um approached by someone who works for a rural development branch of the state government who's very, very interested in this plan, already interested, without seeing things, interested and thinks it will be a real, a a natural fit for some of the state funding. So there's there's hope on the horizon. But projects like these are expensive and they take time. And if we use Nauset Green, again, that was a fast track of four years, twenty-three million dollars and a whole bunch of effort trying to get that funding package put together, including some local funding, some infrastructure from the town. We gave them four hundred thousand dollars. The CPA gave them money. The Affordable Housing Trust gave them money. Wealthy in Orleans pitched in, so it was a community project, um, but we got it done. But since then, you know, there, the housing developments are continuing. Obviously, the cost is rising and the time for projects really hasn't changed. It's always been in that three to five year timeframe, which is discouraging, but it it is what it is. And if we're going to use other people's money to build this, then we have to go through the hoops to get other people's money, and that takes time. And so I I just wanted to give you some updates on what's happening around us in the region too. So Lawrence Hill, Wellfleet, um forty-six units with a budget of thirty-five million. They were just funded this past round, but they were not funded in the first round they asked for because their wastewater plan wasn't ready. It wasn't funded. So having that wastewater plan funded, it really is the first step before you can apply for state funding. The Turo Cloverleaf, I think, is the the one that's floundering the most, but thirty-nine units with a budget of twenty-five million. They have a funding gap right now, and so that's been in development for, I want to say, five or six years easily. Brewster Woods, a successful development, a smaller unit. Um, Orleans has a smaller project going on right now, and then they have a large one with Penrose, our our former developer as well. So there's a few things going on in the region um that are a little ahead of ours. They're after Nauset Green and before our future development.
Cost of those.
It's enormous. It's enormous.
What Nauset Green.
And this is the um, the basic uh master plan development timeline. I've given you as the select board a much more robust one with more detail. Um, and again, I think that's in terms of communication, what is difficult, what is most difficult for me. I think what's difficult for staff is trying to figure out what level of detail we talk about these projects in because we can go down into the minutia. Um, and every single one of them has many, many um marks to hit on their, on the way to completion. So I'm trying to sort of strike a balance to give you an overall big picture view, but enough detail to understand some of the complexities of how the projects will move together. And I think the thing that everyone's most concerned about um in general are funding options. And I I think that this is um a piece that I feel very optimistic about. However, you know, pacing our funding, pacing our expense, pacing our investment is going to be very, very important. And luckily, you know, we have Rich, who happens to be brilliant at this particular um aspect of government as well as many others. I mean, he hates it when I just talk about his budgeting skills, but whatever. I know he's. But I think we have, for wastewater, we have some options for funding that we did not have for water. Water, we came to the party way too late and the state really didn't have many incentives for us left. And we were on our own, literally. We we got loans, but they were at uh two point four percent, not zero. Wastewater, we should have access to zero percent loans through the state revolving fund. And we also have the um Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, which will provide twenty-five percent of the funding for the project, whatever the cost is. So those are two huge pieces that we did not have before going into water with wastewater. But we are still paying for water, and so therefore we have to pace the the beginnings of the wastewater funding plan with the reduction in some of our water debt because we are almost finished with the water project. So we have been building for ten years, so we've also borrowed for ten years. So we're a third of the way completed and we've stopped hitting our peak and we will be hopefully descending, and Rich would like to use that excess capacity to help pay for wastewater. But all on the other projects, I think there's going to be lots of opportunities. If we make an initial investment on Route Six, for instance, then the Mass DOT will pick up most of the construction cost of that. We will have to make a a design investment. Mass Works and other state funding sources will pay for a lot of our infrastructure things if they think the projects are interesting, which it seems like they do. We have a lot of state funding, hopefully continuously, that's going to be available for housing. There is tremendous competition for that funding, however, because everyone in the state needs housing. We are literally in the same boat with every other town and city. And of course, the overall goal is to use all the other sources of funding first so that we can save the tax levies for the things that we can't get other funding for. So a portion of wastewater um and other things that we will retain options control of, like for instance, a community center if we go that route. So that is pretty much it. I am going to um let you know that we will come back with Paul um and the zoning task force when the consultants have have completed their recommendations. Um, the task force will have a better sense of where they are. We'll have maybe some financial information at that point. We'll have, we'll come back for a community discussion probably in mid-fall, late September, early October. Um, and then we want to, as we've done the update on Route Six and now the update on overall, I'd like to have Rachel and the Affordable Housing Trust and anyone else who would like to join us for a a workshop on housing, just to get updated on all the things that we have been working on and what kind of the future timeline is. And we have some questions for you about development of the smaller parcels. So that will be also coming up. And then if people want more information, right now, Kayla will be, will be unveiling for you a um communications plan next month. But and this will all be handled within that plan or dealt with, but I think we also want to make sure that uh until we have all of those things, until we have the project website updated and everything that you know that you can turn to Paul, myself, Rich, or Hillary Greenberg-Lemos for any questions that you have about any aspect of the plan. And also, the last thing is, you can sign up for website notifications by going to our Eastham homepage. And you, if you ask for signing up for notifications, it will you, it will give you a list of things to choose. I know this is not intuitive, but if you choose administration, that will give you, that's the town manager's basically section, and it will give you access to our flashes, which are updates that we send out probably throughout the whole school year, um basically, and there'll be weekly updates. No more, though. We won't be harassing you, so.
Well, thank you.
So that's where we are.
Yeah, there was, I guess it's been in the last couple of weeks, some, you know, people on Facebook, what's happening with Tee Time? You know, everybody jumps in. Lot, lot of backseat engineers out there and, oh, it's simple. Just put housing on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, simple. That's like saying the bridge needs to be replaced. Just build a new bridge. For two billion dollars or whatever it's going to cost. Thankfully, we're not.
We're not. And there's plenty of opportunity for people to make any kind of comments they want. We, I mean, we prefer constructive comments. If you have great ideas or contacts or or you can assist, but you know, any, any comments you have, send them to me. My email address is is on the website. It's really easy to find. And I do answer my emails within twenty-four to forty-eight hours usually. Jerry?
Yeah, I I think the one thing for citizens to remember is that one of the key features here is wastewater, all of it, and that's going to be before you.
Yep.
It's it's so, how this goes depends a lot on the vote on wastewater whenever it comes up at town meetings. So it's important for citizens to see what's up, try and see what the connections are and pay attention because this is a big, important uh effort. And uh we either go forward and try and get zero percent loans or we miss out on that and pay, pay, pay a lot more. Uh, you you know, if you think about a hundred million dollars, a two percent loan is two million dollars a year versus zero, that's a lot. So I think it's important for the citizens to take a hard look at this because this is not cheap, but it's very important. And if we sit down and delay, 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 we're going to lose out on some funding and opportunities. So please be involved.
And I think we will be able to present a funding plan to you that it it's it's not going to be painless, but it will be manageable.
Right.
Uh, Jackie, can you just elaborate a little bit on what happens if we don't pass wastewater? In other words, isn't there a mandate for specific septic systems and so forth over over a larger long-term period?
There is. And what what we're, one of the reasons we're working with Orleans so closely right now is because we are planning on um submitting a joint watershed management plan with the town of Orleans. So that will sort of bias that five years, that grace period for some, some residents that that are in that situation where you might be in in nitrogen-sensitive area, which, you know, a lot of the town is. But I mean, the truth is, you cannot vote for this next, next spring. And you can put this off for another five years or ten years, I'm sure. We could be under a consent agreement in order to do it, so we could be forced to do it ten years from now. We're going to present to you a plan that I think is affordable for the town. Um, again, not painless, but manageable, and it's it's going to be, I think, our joint recommendation that you accept it. But I'm not going to lie and say that it's the only time you'll get to make that decision. But I do think that it will certainly help. It will, it will save all of our residents from worrying about the eventuality um of having to do innovative alternative systems because they are um of having to do innovative alternative systems because they are really expensive. And I think we will try and build into, again, our wastewater plan at some point, assistance for residents if they have to go to IA once we have a wastewater system. Because there will be, this wastewater system is not going to cover every house in town. It's, it's going to be limited to what we need to do um and what we can afford to do for the next ten or twenty years. So. Did I answer your question? I think I wandered.
I think so. You tickled the edges on it. What, you know, what, what is the timeframe?
It's five years. So once we have a watershed management plan, you will have a five-year grace period to hook up, to update.
Once we have the plan, if you fall within.
If you fall within.
And what happens if you don't fall within?
Then you don't have to worry about it for right now.
But don't you have to put in a new septic system?
Nope.
No, okay.
Not unless you, not unless your septic system fails. So, you know, again, it's, it's a, there's always a risk in these things, right? So.
Yeah, I, I just wasn't clear on the whole context of what's been laid out as mandates and how we're, because I love our response. I just wasn't sure what, 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 what was going on behind cracking the whip on this. And, and I think there's a, there's a period where we have um financial assistance available to us.
And that's really what I'm chasing, as I said. I think we could put this off, but it will not say, okay, we'll take a step back. Putting off water costs the town twenty-eight extra million dollars in interest. So that's a lot of money and it, and wastewater is going to be more expensive. So it's going to be more money. So I think we, we would be irresponsible if we didn't go after it now when we can A, solve a problem that we have and B, pay for it in the most painless way possible with the most incentives to do it. Right now, the Cape and Islands gets priority for funding. So we really need to to be on time for this one. And that's really why I'm pressing it now um for that reason, not necessarily because we'll suffer tremendously if we wait five years. Um but, you know, do we want the state of Massachusetts to tell us what to do? Or do we want to design a plan that's right-sized for Eastham and that will get the job done in terms of cleaning up our environment and do it in the least, in the most cost-effective way possible?
Strike while the iron's hot.
Exactly.
Amy?
Um, I want to thank you for this presentation. Um, it was extremely helpful and I think just the kind of full circle of the conversation too, to show you how dependent so much of this is on wastewater and other programs that are going on. It's not just one thing operating in a bubble. And so I think tonight we were able, you were able to, to display that in a way that was clear and easy to understand. So I appreciate that.
We're trying.
Yeah, it's not easy. It's hard, it's hard to explain it. Yeah, no, that was great.
Suzanne?
Um, I will, I think it's really great that staff and the board and everyone who goes into making this possible have really decided that, yeah, we're going to do it. We're going to do the whole, we're going to do the whole thing. And I think there was a possibility that you played whack-a-mole on any number of these things, whether it was the road or wastewater or housing or the redevelopment of the property of the northeast Ham corridor and to be able to really try and line it up in a way I'm so excited about. I'm so excited about it and I, I maybe I guess even excited about the fact that it could, you have ten years on this timeline and I feel like we've been waiting a long time for some of these changes. We've worked on it for a really long time. I can't wait to see what Town Center Plaza looks like with new buildings on it. Um, and yeah, I just, I think it's really smart and I think we will probably do really well in some funding rounds be, because we bothered to do the really big lift of doing all of it. We considered all of it. Um, and we do need all of it to, to get it done.
And I think what you said is really important. There, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what's going to happen in the state of Massachusetts, in the federal government. We just don't know. We do know that things change and we get incentives for certain things. And tomorrow, someone might decide that a road is the incentive. With a plan, we're ready. We're ready to pivot. We're ready to go in a different direction if we need to. Um, right now, you know, we're focusing on where the money is, where we know it is, what we want to do. And of course, we don't want to spend money on anything that's not what we want to do. So, so you know, we're not going to fall for that either. We just have to really um kind of move with all the specifics in mind, but towards our goal. And I think I, what I'd love for you guys to reflect on too is, as a board, um, I don't know how many tiny decisions we've made together over the past eight years that have led to this place. But it's a lot of small decisions. And while a lot of the community forgets that, you know, we're kind of aware of those, how those small decisions have added up to this. Um, and that's why I, at first I wanted to write something narrative, like tell our story. How do we get to this spot? Um, but I think this is a better way to do it. So we're back around.
Also, one, I guess, technical question, maybe Paul can answer it, is uh do we keep the DC PC with the new form-based code?
Oh, it's a good question.
Yes.
Thank you for getting up and saying yes.
Yes.
Is, is the overall, is the overriding district.
Okay.
But going back to Jackie's point of, we've been doing this for a number of years and everything, each piece is built off the last. So when you go back to twenty seventeen, we had a study that said when we had the DC PC and it's a form-based code is the next iteration. So we take the framework of DC PC stays, but we're trying to amend the bits and pieces of the zoning to integrate the form-based code, again, to streamline it, to make it more usable and also to make sure that what we want to happen on tea time and town center can happen. So the zone, so that's why we're doing this first too, because that sets up the framework. So, but the answer requested is DC PC stays, we're augmenting it and integrating the form-based code into it.
And, and because of that though, it does add an extra step and we will be, have to circle back to the commission and make sure that they're comfortable with the changes that we're trying to make. So forgot about that.
And we have been working closely with the commission staff. Comes to almost all of our.
County commissioners have to re-approve it or anything or the?
It goes to the, uh technically, yes, but that's.
Not the assembly, but the commissioners.
The Cape Cod Commission itself, the commission members.
Okay.
It goes to the commission for approval, basically as long as the commission staff, they follow their recommendation. Then it goes to the Assembly of Delegates. At that point, it's usually, you know, pro forma type of thing, but technically it requires those two. And we did that. Um, we have made adjustments, you may recall, to the DC PC a couple of times over the last few years. So it's the same, same process each time and we've been successful. But again, um that's why we're trying to integrate the commission staff through this whole thing. So there's no curveballs, no surprises. We get this thing. So basically, we know, we know the answer is, the vote's going to be yes when we get there. So.
Got you.
We've done a lot of work to keep in very close communication and the, the commission has been really helpful throughout this whole process, I think, from the very beginning. So.
And we don't have a person on the commission.
Yeah.
Right now.
That's right. We have a couple of people that are interested.
Do we, do we appoint someone?
Yeah, we have to appoint someone and I'm, I'm going to remind myself to put that on.
I will, I just, she's been really great. But Sarah Corjeff is the planner at the commission, who is our um planning liaison to Eastham. She's also a resident of Eastham. So it's great because she knows the local, I mean, she has a stake in it too, which is great, but she knows the town and she knows where we're coming from. So that's actually been really helpful to help us make sure we're going in the right direction. So, and the commission knows where we're heading. So our thanks to Sarah. She's been at all our meetings.
Thanks. Thanks, Paul. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just was commenting that I think it's a terrific view of, of an integration of all these projects. I haven't seen anything like this before. And it makes, makes me feel like we've actually got a, we've got a plan when things are actually going to come together, because it really is a jigsaw puzzle.
It really is. It really is.
All the pieces are up in the air.
Right.
And I know that it feels like that for us. So I'm sure that for residents looking from the outside in, it's an incomprehensible puzzle. So really, I do we have struggled to pull this together in a comprehensive way. But it, it's a good struggle and it gives us the basis now for communicating regular updates to the community. So that's my hope is that sort of the suffering that we've done for the past few months is, was worth it. And I, I thank you for the feedback.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on to the uh, the shellfish grants. So we have a memo from the our shellfish constable, Devin Nunes. Um, first, we have uh to accept a relinquishing of a, of a site. And then we can transfer a new person from the waitlist.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
I move that we accept the relinquished aquaculture site.
I'll second that.
Okay, and that's for Devin Dwyer N sixty-three. I'm just all right, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Five to zero. Okay, now transfer to waitlist. Um Jeremy Lapardo.
I'm moved that we transfer Aquaculture Site N sixty-three to Jeremy Lapardo.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. We have a couple of extensions. Mike, oh, go ahead.
Oh.
Just read the name and the site.
I was on the agenda before, so I move that we accept the grant, grant extensions for Michael O'Brien B seventeen W David Dwyer B eight E and Jennifer Dwyer B twelve W.
I'll second it.
Right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. Oh, Jamie?
I just had a quick question. Sorry. Um, it says permission to, requesting permission to expand to aquaculture site B A W, but it doesn't say how much of an expansion. Is that going from a half acre to an acre? Is that what that means?
Half acre area is really, really permission to expand. I guess they're each half acre parcels.
Right, okay.
So they're going from an acre to a half acre or a half acre to a full acre.
I think, I guess it would just be helpful to have that next time to understand the.
And I think that's the same with all the other ones. They're going from a half acre to an acre.
Right. I don't know what B eight W is, but I do know what an acre is.
I think they're all half acre.
What you should get, and I will, I will ask Devon to provide it, is that, the measurements, but also the map.
Right.
Map is useful.
Because I'm assuming these are adjacent and this would connect and make their life easier.
Right.
But again, with the map, it would make it much easier for anybody who picked up the packet to.
Yeah, Jamie, I, I remember last meeting or meeting before the talk about instead of having half acre sites with a reserved other half acre to make them go have the full acre. And, and this is probably along that, that line, but you're right, we should know that.
Right, right. And not everybody wants a full acre, so.
Jamie, Devin is on to answer any questions too.
Okay, great. Um, hi Devin. Um, I think, I'm assuming you can hear me at this point. Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thanks. Um, yeah, so I was just saying, maybe in the future it would be helpful to include the um magnitude of the expansion as well as a map so that we could appreciate the fact that like, maybe someone's expanding to a grant site that's adjacent to where they already are.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I could, I could have done that. Um, it's so the extensions are, they're not really technically an extension. It's just the fact that in our regulations currently, um, they started off with half of their full acre and then they receive after a certain period of time their second half acre. Um, and so that's what that is. It's not necessarily an expansion to a different site. It's just their site, but they want to utilize the other half of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
No, we don't have to vote. We already voted. Yeah. Um, the uh, the last thing, the salt pond update, we're going to wait on that. I talked to Kayla earlier. And I think we just need to learn more about it before we
Yeah.
update. Um, yeah, because it's a, it talks about a uh a seasonal closure.
Yeah.
Of salt pond. I guess they don't have to do as much testing then, but I'm not, I'm not even sure. So I think we need a, you know.
More info on this.
And the letter didn't come yet?
Um, may, can I ask a question if I can?
Sure, go ahead Devon and speak up. We're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me if I talk a little louder?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to know what information um and like, would you like me to provide um for that topic moving forward, just so I know what to provide to you guys. Um, there was a letter that was submitted um from the DMF um in support of this decision. It was a decision that we kind of made together. Um, and we wanted to just bring it forth to you guys, but if you need further information, I just would like to know what you need exactly, or if you want the state to come and talk with me about this topic and talk to you and they can answer more questions. Um, I just am kind of looking for what you guys need for me.
I think just you coming and giving us a presentation on what's, what this, you know, involves. Um, because yeah, we don't, none of us really know what, what this means. So yeah, just be good to have a, a, you know, just a bigger presentation. So it's more in-depth.
Um. Or just a, just a memo.
And maybe even a little history on, you know, closures and, and things like that and why you want to see this happen.
Okay, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I mean, their main concern is just that, I mean, technically, the estuary is considered a biohazard when uh the PSP closure occurs and then you have the DSP closure, which is diuretic. And I think we kind of came to this decision because we had someone get sick. Um, and we had to report that to DPH and so we're kind of remaining on the cautious side of everything. Um, and so Salt Pond has been closed since March nineteenth. Um, and we create a schedule um yearly um in advance and we can't even really utilize the majority of that schedule because it's closed for so long. Um, and so there was a lot of factors, but yeah, definitely. I can um create a presentation and have that set up for you guys.
That would be great. Thank you, Devon.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone?
Amy, did you want that as a public hearing as well?
I don't think specifically public hearing, but yeah, I had said that before to her on the phone, but discussion, yeah, discussion. An appointment, but not a, not a hearing. All right, administrative matters, windmill weekend.
I heard there is a theme for the.
Yes, back, back to the farm.
We have to be farmers.
We could be farmers, we could be vegetables. I think that would be really fun.
There's going to be a lot of turnips in this.
Turnips, asparagus.
Oh, yes.
Corns, strawberries, all the, the local.
I'm wearing cowboy boots.
Blueberries. I have about six spare bibobos if anyone needs some.
Lack of dignity end. Uh, yeah, I'm not going to be a blueberry, but I'll wear cowboy boots.
You won't be a blueberry, huh?
Horses, we could do horses, like Willy Wonka.
Horses, plow. I have an old plow in the barn.
We could finally bring in the horse. That's.
We put wagon wheels on your dad's car.
I wish we still had the truck, the Jeep truck.
Oh, that was, that, the Halloween.
That was great.
That was awesome. Yeah.
So I just put it on there, just put it on everyone's radar. Kind of figure out what we want to do.
All right.
So think about it.
Well, how many meetings do we have until, oh, two more.
When is windmill weekend?
Oh, at least, it's the weekend after Labor Day, so.
I, my.
Got another strong month to plan. Kayla will order. Kayla will order candy.
Windmill weekend would be the seventh.
Nothing that melts.
Seventh and eighth, Sunday.
Oh, I won't be here.
Yeah, you can have Mary Jane.
Won't be here either, huh?
Might not be here.
Will your dad help us even if you're not?
So, yeah, of course he will, but I won't be here.
Won't be here.
I'll be in Iceland till the, I come back on the eighth.
I think we needed to move. Well, I, I might not be here either, so. I know, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll actually be in a sling at that point.
Oh, right, he's having.
Oh, but you could have had a farming accident.
I could have. I could, and lots of final shirts too.
Scarecrow. You're a scarecrow. I might have to join the library float or something.
I don't know. Okay. All right.
Really degraded now, okay.
All right, now we go.
All right.
Long meeting, yeah.
All right. So we have a Timothy's. We have two items under Timothy, Timothy Smith loan. We have a renewal for Emmeline Schnitzer.
Did you chat with them? Are you still on?
I.
It's a renewal.
Is, is Kellen Warren a renewal?
Yes.
Okay, they're both renewals. So for Emmeline Schnitzer and Kellen Warren.
You want a motion for both?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the Timothy Smith renewals for both applicants.
The second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. Both getting pretty good grades.
Yeah.
Awesome. I talked to Emmeline, I remember last year, and, uh, she's doing great. All right, next, we have committee appointments. We have a resignation first from Gary Senical, Recycling Committee.
I move we accept the resignation of Gary Senical from the Recycling Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
And I have one addition, I have one additional thing in this category.
Resignation?
No, it's not, oh, it's an appointment.
That's right.
We're on.
We're, we're on.
So basically, um, the zoning board is making, they're filling their seat on the zoning task force. So Martin Ridge.
But do we still have to do an interview with that, I thought?
No, no.
Cause it's a committee too.
It's the committees.
Cause I got an email that said.
I know, but it's not, it's like when Scott, the moderator, makes an appointment, or when the FinCom sends someone. This is a, a, a seat that you have given them to fill. But we just wanted to let you know. Um, Mary and Paul do, are fine with this. And we, Martin Ridge is the man.
Okay.
Right.
All right, so other appointments, we have Aleni Carr to Climate Action Committee. Tom Ryan to the Old Town Center Historic District, Gwyneth Buttra to Recycling Committee. And Brian Farley, Early, sorry, to the Planning Board.
Okay, uh, I move, uh, the following committee appointments as listed.
Okay.
All right, as far as I interviewed Tom Ryan and, uh, Gwyneth Buttra, and both were very eager. And, uh, Gwyneth has been going to recycling meetings for months and has, has some great ideas.
Nice.
So that's really nice. Um, Tom Ryan, some people might know him from, he was on the four hundred committee and.
He's great.
Yeah.
Quite, quite resume. It was.
Yeah.
I, uh, interviewed, uh, Aleni Carr, uh, Climate Action. She was, uh, very active, very in, into what it was. She has a different, she will come with a different perspective. Cause she worked with, uh, medicine and trying to look at climate action through hospitals in Boston and so forth. So it's a very, she will, I think she will be a very great addition there and bring a different perspective.
That's great. And, uh, Brian Early is, uh, he would like to serve another three-year term. So, so this is a renewal.
He's a renewal?
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. All right, town manager's report.
Um, biggest, biggest update is the Special Legislation House two oh nine seven, the community fund signed by the governor. Thanks.
Yes, yes.
Have we gotten our check from APERTA yet?
Uh, no, we have not, I don't believe yet.
They, they, they already promised to donate two thousand dollars to it.
Right, yeah.
Thank you to Julian Sears Office. They did a really great job helping us navigate that.
We should probably do a press release for that, right?
We probably should, yeah. That's a great idea.
Jackie, on, on that, um, that legislation does contemplate the Suck Board setting up rules and regulations and appointing.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna.
So, um, that's something we'll have to get on the agenda for our future.
Right, and we would want those in place for, uh, July one. Is that what, what the goal would be?
Yeah, probably with this upcoming tax, tax year fiscal.
November one?
So we have to talk about what that looks like. But, um, now I also have some ideas, um, so, uh, Jackie.
Yeah, well.
Um, you know, perhaps, um, you know, a working group of one or two of you, just to get some things rolling and then presenting something to the full board.
Okay.
All right, sounds great. Thanks, Rich. Anything else, Jackie? Did, did your goal setting coming up?
Think so. We have goal setting coming up, but.
End of September.
Yep.
Do, do we happen to know?
I think we can just bust this out again and for goals.
Exactly.
Like, this is the goals.
I'll give you some suggestions.
Yes, fantastic.
Um, did, did we happen to hear about, uh, the file for requests for subsequent de novo hearing? The dog hearing?
I haven't, I haven't heard that today.
Okay.
It was, today was the day, so.
Today was the day. Yeah, that's okay. If you hadn't, I was just wondering, cause today was the day.
Right. Yeah, the magistrate approved.
And you're, yeah.
Supported.
Waiting to hear from our attorney whether there was another.
Appeal.
Appeal.
Naked appeal to the, to the court, if they so desired.
And you're posting these now on the website?
Yes, we are.
Awesome.
Yay, thanks.
Right.
All right, new and upcoming agenda items?
I don't have a new, I, I forgot something at the beginning of the, uh, I mean, I want to remind everybody that I think, Kayla, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, this Friday, the Orleans Firebirds will be recognizing our soon-to-be new fire chief, Lisa, at the, uh, their ballgame. Uh, the game starts at six thirty, but usually the recognition comes at least fifteen minutes. So you don't have to stay for the game, but I would hope that as many of us that can be there can be. And those watching, uh, online, uh, this would be a great thing to go there and support Lisa, who is the.
Friday?
Uh, the Fri- this Friday.
Next week, for some reason, but.
Oh.
At the Firebirds game, so six o'clock there at, uh.
Actually, six thirty, Jerry?
Six thirty.
Six thirty is the game, but we should be there between six, six fifteen, because the game starts at six thirty. But the, whatever they're gonna do would be a little bit earlier.
Okay.
Thanks.
I forgot two little things.
Go ahead.
Can I add, uh, well, three little things. See, I told him at the beginning, I was like, oh, I always have these little questions and I don't remember. When we got an email about, uh, wildlife corridors and the road, road design, and I replied to her today. And I, I looped in Karen Strauss to see what she might think about it. Um, and then I had also gotten a comment about, and called. I'm blanking on her name, the water department, because someone had mentioned that some of the roads.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, she answered and she's lovely. So if you ever have questions, call Kim. She's great.
Wonderful.
You had a paving question?
I had a paving question, cause someone was like, our road got done first for water and it's not paved. And she explained that we didn't pave the first contract, and then we realized that that was not the move. And we subsequently paved the rest of them. And then when we maybe go to revisit, whether or not we decide if the water project is done, we should look at some of the roads that maybe didn't get paved.
Right.
The truth is, it, we didn't put a full overlay, a full pavement overlay into any of the contracts. We didn't have the money. We didn't think we had the funding. But we have come in under budget so well that in phase two, all the phase two roads, we chose the full pavement overlay. So we're gonna now go back to the phase one roads and apply that treatment.
Sweet.
If we have enough money, which I think we do.
Okay, I told the person that it might be a while before it gets paved, but to be patient. And then I kind of started picking up the honoring the Effie people. But I, I didn't get super far. I got as far as emailing the library to be like, hey, when can I schedule? But it was like too early in their scheduling, schedule. And then I tried emailing the Chamber of Commerce to be like, hey, do you think you have a member who would want to, um, sponsor, take, sponsor this? And I, I don't believe I ever received a response. Um, and I still need to email the flower people. So this is me. For help or some accountability buddies.
Jackie, Jackie's in. Yeah, she's like, well, yeah.
I was like, oh, man, it's July and we did it in September last year. And I thought I was tuned really great emailing someone about it in May and.
Yeah, I should, I, yeah, I would think the chamber would be.
Yeah, I bet we could, I, I know they're all quite busy in the summer, but.
Right.
I bet there's somebody out there that will.
Yeah, so if anyone made it this far in our meeting and is interested in maybe providing sandwiches to our lovely, um, Flower Island volunteers. Uh, please, uh, get ahold of us.
I mean, it's, I think art's been a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It wasn't outrageous.
We might be able to fund it.
All right, we have some minutes. June seventeenth and July eighth. On the June seventeenth, I think Jerry talked to you, I was, I did not call in, I was napping.
Horrors.
Yes.
Yes.
After surgery.
Other than the, the fix on, uh, Amy, uh, we will, uh, I had, I had no problems with the June seventeenth.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as listed.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero.
I, I had to abstain. I wasn't on the board.
You weren't, you weren't even on the board yet, or?
No.
You weren't?
Started in, didn't it start in July?
No.
Was it in June? Oh, this was a May thi- this wasn't May, it was June?
June, yeah, June seventeen.
Five, zero. I'm, I'm with you.
I wasn't there, but I watched the video and I read them.
All right, I do have one set of minutes from January that apparently were missed, that the clerk's office has made me aware of. So you will be getting that just to approve.
Okay.
Okay.
That one, Bob, about. Actually, you can. You can watch, watch it. All right, July eighth. Minutes.
Oh, I thought I approved both.
Oh, we did both?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind.
We're done. Would you like a motion?
Put it all together.
You wouldn't.
Is there anything else?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Oh, you did.
All right, all in favor?